Here by call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners in person. Here's to that. So yeah, we're not out of the woods yet, but we'll we'll take the good news as we can. Let's um let's all let's get started by doing the pledge of allegiance altogether, not on zoom.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with no exceeding justice for all.
It's so hard to keep steaming up the glass. Before we do our moment of silence, you know, I you probably saw on social media or some other release that that we just had the beginning of March, the commemoration of what crazy year it's been, you know, so we will we will think about folks affected by COVID for the next many decades, probably here at the first of March. And so with that in mind, as we in our moment of silence, let's take a moment to reflect on all those affected by the pandemic. We've passed half a million deaths, 100,000 just in a month or so recently. And it's affected us here locally in our neighborhoods, our community, our state, nation. The losses have been profound and painful and so let's keep all those families in our thoughts along with our healthcare workers, our first responders as we take a moment of silence. So please join me now. Thank you. Thanks so much. All right. So of course, how could I forget? First item is the agenda. You have had this since last week. If you have any questions, otherwise we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda as presented.
Oh, second that. Motion and a second. I don't have to identify everybody. You can see where everybody is. It's nice. Is there any further discussion? All hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Affirmative as well. So we have a motion unanimously. So the first item up is the public hearings. So I will pass it up to Spernoff.
Thank you. And there will be three public hearings actually tonight conducted by the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners. And these are to consider the requested amendments to chapter 153 zoning. The following rules of procedure will apply to these hearings. A public notice of each hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will be reporting all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. And written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing and should also be submitted in full to the town clerk. If speaking, please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue and to a time period of three minutes. A five minute exception will be made if there's a spokesperson for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come forward to the microphones that your statement can be taped. There will be no debates. Please identify yourself when you come forward as well as your address. So the first public hearing tonight will now come to order, and this hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioner, Commissioners to consider the following amendment to chapter 153 dot zero seven six D off-street parking and loading to modify table of parking requirements for retail office and related uses. There are no individuals who have signed up indicating their desire to speak. So is there anybody else that would like to like to speak about this particular amendment or proposed amendment?
I see any hands, so I guess we can move on. Yep. All right. So the item we're talking about has been the planning board. We've talked about it here a number of times. You know, you've got all the background business here, the things that have happened in the past about it. And but there's never too too much discussion on it. So I'll open it up. Long process, but that's how we like to do things thoroughly and thoughtfully. So hopefully this will make make some difference. Anybody like to do the honors?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion of approval. The Board of Commissioners files a proposal amendment 153 dot zero seven six D off-street parking and loading. Modified tables parking requirements for retail offices and related uses is consistent with all comprehensive plans or other official adopted plans of the town of Goodover Hills that are applicable and that the amendment is reasonable in the public interest because it improves parking connectivity.
Could have said it better myself. There's a motion on the floor. A second from Ms. Ingram. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will take a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Affirmative as well. Passes unanimously. All right. Well, that's Mr. Vornell. We have another hearing to commence.
The the second public hearing will now please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following. An amendment to chapter 153 dot zero zero two definition, add definition for accessory dwelling unit. Add chapter 153 dot three one five accessory dwelling units as a new section. And chapter 153 dot one seven six commercial, chapter 153 dot two zero six light industrial two. And chapter 153 dot two two six light industrial one in amending days, you would be adding accessory dwelling unit as a permitted use. And again, no individuals have indicated by signing off a desire to speak. So is there anyone else who would like to speak?
You guys hearing, we we are back to the same sort of moment. Again, accessory dwelling, another thing that we have really looked at in depth and have done in some other towns. This is sort of a baby step going towards a possible wider adoption if it goes well to to find out what happens when we give folks this opportunity to make some more money on their property or hopefully use it in a better way. That's helpful on a whole bunch of levels that we've talked about, both for affordable housing and for folks that to amend their income by having another place they can rent out on their own property. Again, any other comments to put a final touch on it? Otherwise, we're we're looking for whoever would like to take exciting moment to to read the motion.
I'll do it.
John always willing to step up to the
This is what I'm excited about and happy to have.
It's good to look back this years from now and say, John made the motion.
I will make a motion of approval. The Board of Commissioners filed a proposal to amendment to 153 dot zero zero two definitions to add a definition for accessory dwelling unit and 153 point three one five accessory dwelling units, new section. And 153 dot one seven six commercial, 153 dot two zero six light commercial two and 153 dot two two six light industrial one and industrial dwelling unit as a permitted use is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of town of Goodover Hills. And that are applicable and that is the amendment is reasonable in the public interest because it adds more housing options for our community.
That's how you really did it. Say it better than I did.
Besides to have a script.
When they're complicated like that, lots lots going on there, but good to be prepared. So we have a motion on the floor. I think we have a second from Mr. Gray. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. And aye from the mayor as well. Another unanimous vote there. Thank you all for that. Back to you, Mr. Vornell.
Another third public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following. To reduce minimum lot size to 15,000 square feet for duplex dwelling units in chapter 153 dot one sixty B two residential high 153 dot one eighty B two commercial, 153 dot two ten B two light industrial two and chapter 153 dot two thirty B two light industrial one. Again, nobody has signed up. Anybody else want to speak? Turn it back to the board for discussion.
Well, it's nice to not have pitchforks in. Actually, though, this one really is probably the the easiest vote of all in that it's really just making us more consistent and allowing multifamily in areas that make total sense compared to the other rules that we have around the town. So hopefully it'll provide some more opportunities for developers and private property owners to to use their property in the best way they see fit. So does anybody like to take the honors away from John?
He's on a roll.
Yes, it's my night time.
I'd like to make a motion of approval. The Board of Commissioners filed a proposal amendment to reduce minimum lot size to 15,000 square feet for duplex dwelling units in 153 dot one six zero B two high industrial 153 dot one eight zero B two commercial, 152 dots two one zero B two light industrial two and 153 dot two three zero B two light industrial one is consistent with all comprehensive plans or other official plan adopted plans in the town of Goodover Hills that are applicable and that amendment is reasonable in the public interest because it adds more housing options to the community.
Super. We have a motion on the floor. Second from Ms. Ingram. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. From the mayor as well and a third great the progress for our town passes unanimously. Thank you all for that and thank Mr. Vornell for leading us through this public comment portion.
Absolutely, Mayor.
At this point in the meeting, we have another highly popular item, which is public comments. So this, of course, you can speak on any topic and and again, three minutes for individual, five minutes for group. Please identify yourself where you live. If anybody would like to speak, this is your chance. It's known as pushing and shoving to the lectern. We shall close the public hearing or the public comment and move on. No need to respond to public comment because there was none. Are there any introductions and presentations that aren't listed? All right, then we will. No old business, so we will move into the new business, which I guess puts Missyus up to bat. We're going to talk a little bit about the offer to purchase on some town-owned property.
Yes, so this um this is the resolution authorizing the upset bid process for the sale of 2011 South Proton Highway and Zero South Proton Highway adjacent there to in 2032 Wrightsville Avenue. The town received an offer back in December. The offer was from M P S Investment Company LP in the total amount of $1,505,000 and included the required 5% bid deposit and was submitted in accordance with the upset with statutes. Town attorney has reviewed the offer and determines it to be submitted in compliance with North Carolina law. We did request and receive appraisal that was shared with four commissioners. And at this time, the board chooses to move forward with the upset bid process and potential sale of the property detailed in the memo. And the resolution of motion would be in order to adopt the resolution authorizing the upset bid process for sale of the 2011 South Proton Highway, Zero South Proton Highway adjacent there to in 2032 Wrightsville Avenue. We would then staff and proceed with advertisement and notification. The matter would return to the board at such a time that a 10-day period had passed without any qualifying upset bids being received.
Right, kind of a complicated process, but we've talked before and I think everybody's up to speed on it. Does anybody have any questions about what what we're doing here? One quick one. Yeah. So if we have a motion of approval tonight, 10 days goes by without another bid. We have to wait. Can we do it through a consensus? If the statute requires us to vote again, we have to wait to the next meeting.
No, I think it's supposed to come back. And I'm not sure this can be a consensus item or can it be tacked into this particular motion?
Yeah, could this vote count for this? And if there's no more, can they vote? Or we have to have a individual vote every second of the way?
In other words, if upset bids came in, is that? No, no. So there would be no vote if an upset bid was placed. Essentially, at that point, that bid would have to stay in place for 10 days undisturbed. And it will continue until such time as there were no upset bids placed for a period of 10 days. And then at that point, that person would become the final, the highest bid. And that's when the contract process would actually take place, take effect, and we'd start moving towards close.
Moving towards a close, right. So one scenario is that nobody has upset bid in the next 10 days, then the process keeps moving forward without any action at that point. And the other is that on day nine or day eight, another bid comes in that's 5% more. At the 10-day mark, you have another 10 days and there could be another bid, another 10. So it could be 20 days, 30 days. But if it's 30 days from now, that means we're getting 15% more than we're getting now.
Right. A way to look at it.
Not a problem to have.
What you guys would be approving tonight is getting no less than 1.5.
Correct.
Oh, five. Yeah, that's a that's a way to look at that.
Good question. And, you know, we want the public to understand how it works to its little bit. It's a it's a good process. You know, it gives everybody time to house an opportunity and hopefully gets us the best press. Any other thoughts, questions, or once again, we are ready to approve a resolution if you all see fit.
I think they're at offer a motion.
There you go.
To adopt the resolution authorizing the upset bid process for sale 2011 South Proton Highway and Zero South Proton Highway adjacent there to in 2032 Wrightsville Avenue. And staff, let them proceed with the advertisement, advertisement notification.
Everything you need. Okay, good. Good. Good to go. All right, we have a motion on the floor. I'll second that. Second from Mr. Williams. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Aye from the mayor. Please move forward. Thank you for all your work on this. I know it's a tricky one and I'd see you moving forward. All right, the next item on new business is amendment of the official traffic map recommendations to westernmost gravel portions of veterans drive.
Yes, so this this was a request from the athletic director of First Flight High School. There's been some incidents of vehicles moving faster than it's considered safe and had requested that the 25 mile an hour speed limit be reduced to 15. This has been reviewed by our police department. And as they do in public services and they do for excuse me.
Listen.
This has to approve that takes precautions to notify motorists that they're aware of the new speed limit. So your motion would be to amend the official traffic map to reduce the 25 mile an hour speed to 15.
I feel for it. It's a it's a tough year to have any kind of conditions.
Everybody just
We still have to take a simple water. We will not hold it against. All right, because everybody, everybody knows what we're talking about. You're at school there and that makes sense to me. And because if you go five or 10 miles over 25, now you're really cooking.
So I'll I'll move there to amend the official traffic map to lower the speed limit portion on veterans' drive from 25 miles per hour to 50 miles per hour as as requested, yeah.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Mac. We have a second from Mr. Williams. All right, any further discussion?
Yes, I do. What what I would like to do, and I don't know if anyone can actually address it right now, but you know, that area back there with the increased traffic to the golf course and the activity to the school, we really need to look at at paving that area. And what I would, I don't want to circumvent anything, but I think maybe the S I S C could, you know, look at what the schedule is and let's look at how we can get that paved back there because I think it would be a benefit to not only the school but to a lot of civilian people, to the access disc golf, yeah, to the disc golf course, the camp softball court. We just kind of talked about it a little bit, you know, as it relates to the Westside group, but not a whole lot. But I think it's an area that we need to at least start looking at. So I just wanted to have that discussion. Might need some speed bumps there, too. Very well, good. Very well, good. But sort of out of sight back there. Yeah, I just think for some reason, it's it's kind of a thing with me that if we're going to invite people to come back and participate at a town facility, then we need to try to work towards making it as good a facility as we can. And yeah, with that long-term and any future development back there, it's it's going to need that too. So I got it. Absolutely. Question. I'm sorry. My son is going to camp all the time. It's hot as lakes back there, you know, in the summer. That's why if we were to look at adding that to, I guess, the Q project pavement, how harder would it be, maybe this is for Derek, to run a water line back there for eventual down there. This is, you know, way down the road, thinking of a bathroom at either the that can be shared from the disc golf course and the camp softball route. Because right now they have, we're down already to go to the football field. That's just worth it, guys.
It's worth collecting some data on that to see, you know, what's the one of the use levels, how's that compared to other places we have facilities and all that sort of thing.
Yeah, they definitely need that back there.
Because it's changing rapidly over time. Whole different wardrobe malfunction.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, good stuff. That will go in the in the permanent record, as they say, in the net. So hopefully the the folks that study these things and the committees that work on the long-term planning will take that into consideration because, yeah, things evolve over time. So again, we were in the middle of, oh, that was further discussion. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Oh, I say aye as well. Any opposed? I guess I want to ask because it's unanimous there. All right, so we have another fifth piece of work. Thank you for that. Moving along, let's see. We've got committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Mayor, we're a couple of things on committee reports. March 24th, I've got a G E A A C meeting scheduled. It's going to be a Zoom type meeting. And it also has been some talk about a Westside group meeting. And in in talking with Cameron, we're going to survey when we can have a meeting in April and try to get a feel from the group, correct, on having a Westside group meeting. But we we need to address some issues and try to move ahead a little. So so that that's the only thing I have on committee reports.
In that in that topic, haven't heard too much about the progress that we can feel that I assume that's moving forward without a hiccup so far. That's good. That's all right. Any no other committee reports? Oh, we're here. All I have is March 2015, 30 in the morning here, we have a scheduled unity appearance commission meeting. And the way things have pretty much recovered, I'm pretty sure we're able to keep that. Knock on wood when you say stuff. Everybody keep doing the right thing. We're all waiting for the next holiday. If you ever look at that graph, it was Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas. Man, we had no holidays for a while. As long as we keep doing, what do they call it down in New Orleans? Yardee grove. Go that go that route. We'll hopefully make it pass pretty great without getting too crazy. So yeah, hopefully everybody stays safe. So that's the committee reports, I guess, right? Next is Commissioner's agenda. It's kind of a little less. Anybody have anything they'd like to?
I do.
Yes, please do.
Yeah. And I hope I'm not out of sync here, but the day is we celebrate the women in our communities who are breaking barriers every day. And we have an example here with us with a couple, three. First off, our town manager who set the base and has been for quite a while. And then our mayor for Tim. And with Meredith, you know, from the planning department. This day is the International Women's Day, and I'd like to point out gratitude and praise for another person worthy of such recognition. And that's Dr. Sheila Davies. She has done a phenomenal job on the administration of the vaccine for the COVID virus. And she's got a lot of help that has done a super job. But every time I've been there, I've had both of the shots. It's probably been the most efficient operation I've ever seen. Everybody's been relatively happy as you can be and very professional. What I'd like to suggest is possibly the mayor write a letter thanking her for what she's done for the citizens of Kill double Hills and for the citizens of Dare County and express our appreciation for having that that operation as efficient as it is.
Certainly crossed my mind. I figure a few more months from now, this worked way up to gold statue status.
I tell you, it's really phenomenal. And I just think it's a good opportunity on the on this day to offer that.
I appreciate it. We look forward to a day where we don't have to think about people's gender or anything else, color of skin or what they believe. We hope these things don't get in the way. We're always glad to see that it's at least working somewhat. Always got room for improvement. So I think that's probably what the holidays are, the the day is all about to remind you, get treated by the same as you can. That's all I have. Appreciate that. That was great stuff. We'll make sure that's in the record as well. Any other commissioners with?
I just wanted to take a second to acknowledge and thank our assistant town manager, Sean Murphy, for his service throughout town pending retirement. And, you know, he's always been somebody that I that I needed to reach out to, was a friendly face and a helping hand and a great resource. But we're all loving to have him. And we can't really offer him that. So we did take a chance to congratulate Charlene Allen on her new pending promotion. So happy news all around.
Good point. Thank you so much.
We'll share that with you. Thank you.
I think it's also pretty awesome to, you know, somebody internally got that. It shows high caliber folks that have serving our town. That's rather impressive.
Very much.
All right. Well, so it's good when the commissioner steal my thunder. But I echo what what everybody says, particularly our new assistant town manager and the chairman. Always a good smooth transition, good leadership in the town. Appreciate it. I just have this one item, which is in your packages here, citizen's guide. Hold it up as if there's a camera. Got digitally available online as well. This is the 2021 citizens guide. The League of Women Voters puts that together and we'd like to thank them. Everybody was here from that group. Sometimes they come out. If everybody was here from that group, sometimes they come out. But a great bunch of volunteers that makes that important thing happen. And I think they got all the. Make sure that your own information is correct, but this is a great way for citizens to reach us. In case you didn't know, this little yellow book is now up to sixty five hundred copies. That go for Dare County, has all the resources you need for local, state, national info in there. All the K D H stuff in there. So thanks again to the league for all the hard work on that and raising the money to get it printed, everything else. It's a great community. Project every year.
I had to chime in. I think the timing was perfect. We had a, a new pharmacist start our stores. You were located in Connecticut last weekend. And I very appreciate to the league for providing this because it gave me the perfect welcome to Goodwill Hills gift to ride. So it was. And it was, it's a whole lot of folks moving that. This resource is more important.
That's true. We do have a lot of, a lot of folks making the jump retiring here or moving here. So we welcome all the new folks that might be watching this, this meeting for the first time out there. Welcome to K D H. That's all I've got for the mayor's agenda. The next item is the town manager's agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'd like to echo Commissioner Windland's comment concerning Sean's retirement and. Charlene's promotion. I've enjoyed the number of years that I've worked with Sean. Because the pandemic has all been a bit different as to how we're going to. Celebrate his retirement. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to, to do some of the things that we would have. Normally done, but it certainly isn't because we haven't appreciated and that we all haven't enjoyed working with him. I know I certainly. Learned a lot from his personnel expertise, his years with the county, as their personnel director and. Have appreciated that very much. As Commissioner Windly stated, we were fortunate in that within our own little family. Charlene Allen, who was our assistant finance director. Is going to move over to the assistant town manager's position, looking forward to that relationship with Charlene. But at the same time, still having her expertise with the finance department. And then. I don't, I think this was also in your email, but from there we were able to promote Angel Doughty. Angel was a CPA. To the assistant finance director's positions. So we're, we're really excited when we can. Offer these positions to, to in-house and have this smooth transition that, that I'm sure we will have. Again, just wanted to thank Sean for his, for his dedication and hard work in town.
Here, here.
That's all I have.
Thank you for that. Yes, we are very fortunate in so many ways and if. If a small group gets together to, to see him off, please send him my regards and my apologies that we can't get together the way we might have in the past.
I think he's just looking forward selling away.
Sailing away, that's right. Sales and sunsets. That sounds great. We're all looking forward to that someday. All right, so after the town manager's agenda, this is the town attorney's agenda.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Now we're back to, to the consent agenda.
Wish me luck. First items and minutes for February nine, twenty twenty one. Second, some update report, January twenty twenty one. Proclamation, Goodwill Hills Board of Commissioners clearing March first as COVID nineteen Memorial Day. This is just a paper trail to record the action of the board. Government access, educational access committee channel. This is a proposed budget. Approval consent agenda will report the budget operating. For TV's government and education channel. Budget amendments. To increase dumpster sales and associated expenses due to the demand for dumpsters. To appropriate the government education access channels grant, to appropriate the grant award from the governor's crime commission for school safety. And to appropriate the grant award from the Dare County Tourism Board for the Beauchamp Field Community Park project. Number six is scheduled public hearings. The first is a zoning amendment request out of Laurel and Associates. This is to amend one fifty three zero seven six A twelve D off-street parking and loading to allow stack employee parking for hotels and motels. B, amend conditional new site plan, Wesley Hornswood, Unit eight oh eight, East Eighth Avenue, Nature's Walk in the Light Industrial Two Zone. To modify site plan to remove workforce housing designation from Unit eight oh eight B. And lastly, the June thirtieth, twenty twenty one audit. The three year audit proposal with order and hundred that was recommended and approved in April of twenty twenty. For the twenty twenty amount of thirty five thousand, the agreement included a consumer price index inflation rate for two to three years. The proposed fee for fiscal year twenty one audit is thirty five thousand seven hundred dollars reflecting the two percent inflation rate. Finance Director Depris Christian's approval of the proposed fee and staff agrees. Approval consent agenda will report the contract and authorize its execution by appropriate officials. Staff rests, men's approval of consent agenda as submitted and a motion would be in order.
All right, so that's your consent agenda. Always nice when the budget amendments are receiving big thousands of money and over foot them. And CPI is a good way to do contracts that last multiple years. Be a fair way to do. Are there any other questions about the consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll look for motion.
I'll make a motion to the consent agenda.
Motion, Miss Ingram, second. Second, from Mr. Gray. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye, and there will be no nays because. It's unanimous again. We repeated that. Thank you for that. We have a consent agenda.
Thank you very much.
One more time, we like to do it twice just in case people had cold feet earlier in the day or wandered along the street, which does not look like it would happen. We have a second public comment. One more chance to prevent and. No takers on public comment again. So we will close public comment and that comes to the bottom of the list there. You as well. The adjournment in less than an hour. You're an efficient bunch. Thank you for your patience. When I was running a little bit late there, I just, that commute is like within two minutes. Every day until you have to be somewhere and then you get everybody driving like thirty miles an hour. Turns out there was a car off, like stuck in the sand. It wasn't even that close to the road, but everyone decided they had to drive real slow. Totally like, wow, this is taking a long time. So, but BJ made me look good by not being too late. Thanks for my cover. Thank you. I'm just going to start leaving fifteen minutes earlier than I think I should, just in case that happens. That's it. So does that mean we got to wait five minutes now? Make the guys stay a lot of rainbow. No, no, we look for a motion to adjourn. I'm just adjourned. So move that in. Second down this end, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, we are adjourned.